Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Kentucky School Committee Work Session on Thursday, February 29th, 2024 at 6:07 PM. Ms. List, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benello, here. Ms. Carney, here. Mr. Shalow.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Here.
Ms. Fernandez.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Chauvinot.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Public participation. Amanda Pompeley has signed up. Ms. Pompeley.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm adjusting. Sorry, short woman problems. Um, my name is Amanda Pompeley. I am a teacher at Shea. Uh, I teach chemistry. Over the course of this year, I have talked a lot about the condition of my classroom, uh, about how the paint is peeling, how there is, uh, stuff flaking off of my ceiling. There's a large water spot on my ceiling. And, um, over the course of February break, I guess, uh, the heating pipe leaked through that spot, and there has been a leak in my room. Uh, there are rust stains dripping down my wall now. It has taken out several of the saddest books that belong to students that I've had stacked up by that, uh, that wall. Um, and we have to replace a whole bunch of workbooks for students that have been destroyed over the course of the break. Um, this is not a problem that we didn't know about. When, you know, we looked at the spot on the ceiling months ago when I pointed it out to Superintendent Royal, she said, "Oh, you know, I heard about that," and someone else said, "Oh, that's a water pipe leak." Like, they knew it was a heating leak. Everyone knows it's the heater. Um, the lack of just basic maintenance at Shea, uh, is reaching a critical point in my life. I have flaking paint all over my walls. I have, um, you know, just the most basic things I have needed. I have windows that, if you attempt to open them, they will fall off the building. I have, uh, a leak in my ceiling now that is destroying students' books and, and resources. Um, I just want to say that this afternoon, you know, we were under lockdown. Everybody knows about it. Uh, the atmosphere was remarkably calm. I had students playing Uno. Everyone was chilling out. Um, a student made a comment about, "Oh, this ghetto school." And I said, "You know, things like this happen at other schools." And I've worked at other schools where there have been Threats of Islands and all these other things. And he's like, "Yeah, miss." He points up at the ceiling, "That's ghetto." And I was like, "Okay, you're right. That's ghetto." Um, I'm with him. Like, we owe more to our kids. It makes them feel like we don't care about them if we will not, even on the basic level, maintain the facility that they go to school in. Uh, if we can't ensure the safety of their own school resources in the school, uh, if their books are gonna get ruined because, you know, there's a nasty old heater that's leaking on everything. So, uh, just saying, um, please fix the ceiling so that my kids' books don't get wrecked anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pompeley. All right. We will go to new business discussion, action items, non-renewal of certified educator. Ms. Williams.
Uh, good evening. We do have one certified educator that we are recommending for non-renewal for the reason of, uh, reasons code 1, 3, or 6, which could include and not limited to teachers returning from leave of absence in our regular teacher may elect to go position. It is anticipated that there'll be fewer teaching positions in the area of which the one teacher is, um, an individual is of least senior, or six is believed there is better teachers available for the position. Motion to be approved.
Second. Motion to approve the non-renewal of certified educator by Ms. Benello, seconded by Mr. Shalow. Any discussion on the non-renewal? Roll call on the non-renewal, please.
Ms. Benello.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Chauvinot.
Yes. All right. Dr. Tena, you taking approval to conduct evaluation of Rhode Island Philharmonic Orchestra and Music School Victoria Dreams Project at Agnes Little Elementary? No, you can stand. Uh, they can't hear you from Megan. You do have to go.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, this is a summary. Uh, the Philharmonic Orchestra, um, runs two very successful sessions, um, one at Agnes Little and one at Winters. A key part of this initiative has engaged a third-party researchers to evaluate the impact of these programs. This program has partnered with Ohio State University, whose reputation in the field of strings pedagogy is widely known and well-respected. In order for Ohio State University Internory Board to allow this work to go forward, they require a letter of approval. So, the, the school district is asking, asking for, um, approval of this program.
Motion to approve the Rhode Island Philharmonic Orchestra and Music School Victoria Dreams Project at Agnes Little and Henry J. Winters Elementary by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion, Ms. Doobie.
Um, I think this is an amazing program that we have in our schools. I've, I've been able to witness the students when they are just starting, and also, um, continuing for us to have elementary school strings programs is wonderful, and I think that it's great that Ohio State University is going to evaluate to see how the Philharmonic can deliver this instruction even better to our students. So, um, or to say that it's going great, either way. Um, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the approval? Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benello.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Chauvinot.
Yes. All right. Field trips for committee approval. Assistant Superintendent Ram.
Good evening. I have two, uh, two field trips for your consideration this evening. The first of the two is Tolman High School to the Nationals Life Smarts Championship in San Diego, California, from April 18th to April 21st. It will include four students and one chaperone. The Tolman students who placed second in the Rhode Island Life Smarts Competition have been invited to participate in the National Life Smarts Championship.
Yep.
The Life Smarts National Championship is an educational event through which everyone learns, expands their experiences and opportunities, meets new friends, and has fun while exploring a new area of the country. Shea, do you want to take them one at a time?
We, they're listed together on the agenda. We can take them.
Okay. The second of the two field trips is Shea High School. Uh, they're asking for a field trip to go to Dreamworks Water Park in Hackensack, New Jersey on May 21st. It will include 80 students and seven chaperones. This is their end-of-year senior class trip to Dreamworks Water Park in Hackensack, New Jersey. Mrs. Monahan is requesting the students, the school committee, fund the student transportation. She is here to speak to that, I believe, this evening. Uh, in, as was done in previous years, uh, the quotes were, uh, in your packet for the busing. Should that be something the school committee wishes to do?
Motion to approve both the field trips as outlined by Assistant Superintendent Ramsey, by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Mr. Shalow. Discussion on the approval. Ms. Grant, ladies and gentlemen.
Um, how many students are in the, um, senior class at Shea?
There are two, little less than 200.
So, and, oh, is it, is this a limited senior trip that only student, 80 students are going if this is a senior trip, or?
If I may, I'd like to ask that Ms. Monahan approach.
I'm just carrying this. Hi. Um, it's, it's not limited, no. Um, this is a trip that the students, we had the students vote on whether or not they wanted to go this far, um, to this, for this trip, and, um, they voted that this is where they wanted to go. So, it's open to anyone. Um, we have, it's an estimate as of right now, but they were estimating as far as students who have told us that they're interested in going, that's about around 80 students.
Okay. And the students raised all the money for the trip on their own to, to go to it?
Um, the students will be, um, paying for, out of the trip.
They'll be paying for part of the trip?
Yes. As is normally the budget for the senior trips.
I'm sorry, I thought...
Go ahead, Ms. Grant.
Um, I, I, I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought for any field trips, um, students were not allowed to pay, and that all students are supposed to be able to go. I could be wrong, but I thought there were other schools that discontinued trips due to the fact, like the Washington trip at Goth, um, because students are not allowed to...
Hold on, let me, can you take that?
Um, yeah.
So, this was presented as the funding source through the student activities account. So, I do believe that you are accurate in your thought process, Mrs. Grant, that students, uh, can't be excluded from a trip, um, without, because of the inability to pay. So, can they pay? They can contribute, but this was also presented to us as it being funded through the student activities account.
Ms. Doobie.
Well, as far as I understand, um, there's a difference between, um, field trips, which are educational in nature, and, um, kind of, uh, senior events, which, um, might be class trips. So, I, I think that, um, there is a difference in, in the law about, um, academic field trips and in, in our own policy. Is this happening during school hours?
No.
It's during school days.
During school day, yes.
So, so, so it is during, during school hours. So, yeah, so I, I think that that might need to be looked into, whether this is being classified as a field trip for academic purposes as far as of our policy, or whether it's, um, similar to, uh, the trips that happen over, uh, different breaks. Like, I know when the kids go to, um, uh, Europe, Europe, no, Europe was, was not during school. It was, it was during a break. So, it's, it's a club funding something that's happening during, during non-school hours that kids could go to. So, I don't, I don't know if this, I, I, I was assuming it was happening on a weekend or...
I, you know, of course, I want the students to be able to do whatever they can. However, I know a few years back, um, there were two teachers over at Goth who ran trips that went back to when I went to middle school, and unfortunately, um, I knew it broke their heart, um, and I think it even broke, you know, people's hearts too, knew that was a trip. They always ran, and, you know, we, I think we really need to clarify what, what the policy and the law is to make sure that all the kids are being treated equally and that all the schools are being treated equally when it comes to this.
Mr. Shalow.
Uh, well, that would take a different direction. Um, I, I'm gonna, I'm actually, if, if this is an issue, then I would like to wait to find out. Uh, the Shea Student Activity Fund, it, students can contribute to that fund, correct? We will mandate them to...
The student activities account is an administrative account that the schools have...
Was, did they run a fundraiser for this?
Did they run a fundraiser?
Well, we've raised funds for the seniors.
Yeah.
And so, that'll be paying for part of the trip, but it's, it's not gonna cover all of it. So, the students, but that's, I mean, last year, they paid, sorry. Um, last year, they, I believe the students, um, paid $80, student, they paid for the trip. Um, this school committee is generous enough to allow us to get funding for the buses, but the trip, sorry, the trip to the park, the tickets for the park, um, are expensive, and, um, it didn't cover all, what we had in fundraising doesn't cover all.
Just taking a turn, but, okay, my question was about the Tolman, um, the one chaperone. Um, is, is that, is there a ratio of more than one? I just don't understand, they have one chaperone being out, uh, in San Diego with four students. Um, so is there a ratio? Is that why?
We could, we could increase that chaperone requirement if need be. I know we did on the last, uh, California Anaheim trip. We increased their chaperone, um, correspondence, the ratio.
If it was, like, if someone had to travel home with a student, that would be the reason...
That was the reason that we brought it, um, last time on the Anaheim trip, uh, based on a situation from last year, so we could increase that. And that's how, not to bring up the Anaheim trip that you approved at one of the previous school committees, but we conditionally approved that based on the, upping of the chaperones.
Oh, there, there was a motion on the floor to approve of the...
Again, Ms. Doobie.
I, I look to approve the Tolman High School field trip.
Motion by Ms. Doobie to approve the Tolman High School field trip, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion on the Tolman trip.
Oh, no, that's, that's, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, um, like to make a motion, well, amend that. Under the stipulation, we increase, increase it to two chaperones.
I have my motion, uh, to approve the Tolman High School trip, um, with the stipulation that we increase to two chaperones.
So, we got an amendment, Diana, or we just...
We have an amendment.
Right. There's amendment on the floor to amend the Tolman National Life Smart Championship to include two chaperones by Ms. Doobie, and seconded by Ms. Benello. Any discussion on the amendment to two chaperones? Roll call on the amendment.
Ms. Benello.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Chauvinot.
Yes. Now, there's a motion on the floor to approve the Tolman High School field trip, but been seconded. Any discussion on the Tolman trip? Roll, as an amendment, roll call on the approval.
Ms. Benello.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Shalow.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Chauvinot.
Yes. Ms. Monahan, I, we need a little bit more clarity on the Shea trip as far as where it falls, if it's a field trip during the school day, if there's another day that it can occur on, or...
I mean, I suppose if I practice with the roots, we can, but it's just, it's normally been on a school day. Um, if I don't, you know, it...
Let me do this, Ms. Monahan.
We're not gonna be able to have a senior trip if kids aren't allowed to pitch into some of the costs, and the, 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 the,
Given the parameters where any student cannot be held back from going on the trip because of financial, which I understand which is our policy, we could end up having 200 students go and that would increase your coach buses as well. So.
Wouldn't that be wonderful? If we could get, if we could get the entire senior class to go on the senior trip.
Yeah, I did a survey.
Just want people to understand that.
Understood. Ms. Carney.
Also wondering for the remaining students, what is the plan in place for those students that day? You know, they're going to have an attendance issue. Are they going to come? Are they doing something fun? Are they, are they learning? Everyone else is on a trip. So for those, the other 120 students, what does that day look like for them?
Yeah, obviously what they did last year.
I would also think in the future, I would before the school takes a vote with students that have some idea about what would be on that vote. I mean, because now we're in a position where the students have voted and we'd love to see that they have voice and choice. But now it's in a situation where they voted for something very expensive that less than half of them can attend, that they're missing school for, and now it's on us today to not be able to be part of that.
Okay, well, as I was just saying, I would make sure that any student who wanted to go, and I know you said 200 might go, but I did do a survey and asked the students, because I was trying to get an estimate of what was going to need for buses. And I asked them who wanted to go and I said if they did not want to go, was it because of money? Was it because of the distance and being on a bus for so long?
What was the response rate of the survey? Did it offer, if the students were absent, did they have an opportunity to make it up? Like, what was, how was it delivered? What was the response?
It was through a Google form that all the students were supposed to take during their advisory. And I don't know how many, I would say, over 100 that backed me. And I think those are the students who for the most part were thinking about going on a senior trip. And some students would just said that it wasn't because of money, because they weren't actually going on a senior trip. Or some of them just didn't want to go that far, but the schools leave that they just didn't want to go on a senior trip.
Do we have a motion there?
Motion to approve the Shea High School trip to Trimmer's Water Park with the provision that any student who wishes to go will be able to, even if they can't.
Motion to approve the Shea High School Water Park trip. As Ms. Dubey outlined, seconded by Ms. Panolo, discussion on the Shea, Ms. Grant.
So, like I said earlier, I, I don't want to keep any student from doing something fun or this and that. But, but I think what we really need to do is if, if we are going to allow this and we are going to move forward with this, then we really need to talk to some of those teachers who, when this law and this policy went into effect, kind of stopped having those trips to New York City and Washington DC because of the impressions they were under in regards to fundraising and costs and things like that. And, you know, I just want to make sure everything is equal for all of our students. We're all in the same district. Even though people go to different schools, it, we should be very consistent in what we do. And I feel that because it might have been interpreted one way, or it was told to certain people one way, that we have students in the past who have really missed out on some opportunities. And I really do think that we really do need to clarify this and make sure that the teachers who have taken it upon themselves, which we appreciate to do these trips, which takes a lot, that we give them the courtesy of talking with them and letting them know that there might be a chance that they may be able to revisit these trips. Because I, like I said, I, I feel like there might have been some students or there might be some teachers who feel that, why couldn't we do ours, you know?
And maybe the policy committee can look at that again. There's a motion on the floor to approve the Toman trip. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Shea, thank you, Mr. Shal. Motion on the floor to approve the Shea trip to Trimmer's Water Park. It's been seconded. Any further discussion?
I'm assuming the coach is included in the motion. Can someone just explain, I'm not sure why there are three.
So I had to get three quotes from different, I had to provide three different quotes from different companies, so.
So is that for each bus?
No, no, we went with, yeah, we're going with the least expensive one, JBT, I believe it, JBT.
So two buses, coach buses would cost $5,744.50.
We would be looking, we would be looking at definitely Matt Schall's students.
That is something that would keep you from approving it, certainly put a cap on what you would spend on buses, but.
The motion on the floor to approve the Shea trip has been seconded. Any further discussion? It being non-road call on the approval, please.
Ms. Panolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Shal?
Yes.
Ms. Dubey?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes. Thank you. All right, Assistant Superintendent, you're up again. RFP for Construction Manager at Risk Unified High School.
That's Colliers' is, well, we are seeking approval from the school committee for Colliers to go out to request proposals for Construction Manager at Risk for the Unified High School.
Motion to approve the RFP for Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Unified High School. I'm Ms. Dubey, seconded by Ms. Panolo. Any discussion? Ms. Panolo.
How long does this process take?
This, I believe the posting is put out there for three weeks. I believe there's a, a meeting, an optional meeting for all interested parties a week into it. And then the submissions will be back to us within three weeks. Anything else? Road call on the approval, please.
Ms. Panolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Shal?
Yes.
Ms. Dubey?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes. All right, moving along. Recommendation to award Virginia Cunningham Playground Equipment.
Good evening once again, and Gianna from Colliers is here for a viewing, showing the equipment. But at this point, we are looking for an approval for a playground equipment package in the amount of $194. I'm going to start that again. The recommended motion is that the committee award the Cunningham Playground Equipment Package to O'Brien and Sons of Medway, Mass. Gianna's here, too.
Motion to approve the Cunningham Elementary School Playground Equipment Package by Ms. Panolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Discussion, Gianna's going to take us through.
Yeah, if anything, here's the one, so this is part two of our part two of our playground renovation, so.
Now they can't.
Nobody.
We're good.
All right, so tonight we're actually presenting Cunningham Playground Equipment. And I have the landscape architect here, Tim from Gaga and Garrick, landscape architecture. They're going to go over the playground equipment that we're buying and then overall plan. Where I just want to mention that we're using a part of the Winters Playground Equipment. The size of Cunningham Playground is almost a double up credit. So we need a lot of equipment. We have some site work to be, to be done too. So just here trying to be more economical. So we have Winters Elementary School Equipment that were used, that were going to be used for different elementary school. They were not, so that's a good opportunity for us here to grab these and use them for this school. As well as there's a lot more needed, so we are going to go over the new equipment that we're buying tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Remembering from last time. It's an overall site plan showing Cunningham School, which is over here, Baldwin Street, the top. You can see playgrounds set in this form fashion. The green arrows are how you access the site. So just focusing on the, on the equipment. New three bay swings, a new playground set here and the Winters Playground in the background. Focus getting closer on that. Colors, blue for the shade sails. The lawn, which is a green, light green for a lot of fixtures. And peacock, which is a light blue plus regular blue for a lot of the fixtures.
I just want to mention here, so every single thing color wise, equipment wise, that was picked and chose by the team. There are the designers as well as equals or members from the school committee, living committee, the principal of the school collectively.
The new playground set over here, and on the right you can see the reused Winters Playground Set.
So, Tim, on the, the Winters set, it's the same color scheme?
So I'll, I'll show you that. We've replaced some of the fixtures and added to that to get, land the colors. So there's some uniformity with the, with the playgrounds.
Okay.
So they're not completely separate, so playgrounds. Clix is looking from the Baldwin Street side of playgrounds. Actually, you can see this, you'll see the blue slides and a lot of the blue panels. And you can see the, the peacock posts where we added the shade sails, which gives the new, new pictures. And like this slide or this climbing structure here, add the lawn and the blue combined. So there's a new, in fact, you'll see that in a second. You'll see where we added some new fixtures. And then three bays, two accessible bucket swings, and then two group swings, which is great because you can get five, six, seven kids on there at the same time, maybe more. It's exciting. So a couple of existing pictures of the, of the Winters program playgrounds. You can see the blue and the blue colors and then the brown holes. So that's the existing framework. You can see some, a lot of it's in good shape, a lot of the panels are green. We've replaced a couple, added to, some of the slides needed to be replaced. So that's where you see the lemon color, the lawn color, sorry. And then the climbing structure too as well. There's a couple of broken pieces, missing pieces, so we replaced those as part of it. Some of these you can see with the arrows, et cetera, keeping it quick. Also, there are a bunch of at grade panels, which I'll show you in a second. So the swings, three bays, et cetera, and a bunch of kids, even the kids in arning wheelchairs can use. They have, they have lots of fun with the bucket swings. The freestanding panels. This lady is sound and, and color splash wheels all these, so some sound sensory connection to that. These playgrounds do not allow access above grade for somebody in a wheelchair. But there is more than required for below at grade and surface grade for, for people in wheelchairs. These are panels at grade more, you got the coffee tube and space panels, plus the back door, et cetera, the storefront. And then panels that are on the upper decks, of course, is the ones that I showed you the picture from that was existing on the Winters, plus Periscope and et cetera, the hourglass. And then, of course, there's balance theme and pod climbers for balancing and practicing. And we'll see soon with more stuff. It's like plans work.
And this is work to occur this summer?
Yes.
Start to finish?
Yes. Part of that is, is, yeah, order again.
There's a motion on the floor to approve, it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the Cunningham Playground Equipment? It being non-road call on the approval, please.
Ms. Panolo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Shal?
Yes.
Ms. Dubey?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Chavino?
Yes. All right, high school update, safe and orderly schools. Assistant Superintendent Range.
Yes. So we have the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee that began last year. Kind of stopped a little bit and resurrected just recently. So on Tuesday of this past, of this week, we met with a more abbreviated committee, which consisted of administrators and teachers from the high schools only, not including GMW. Because we felt as though a more focused approach to this conversation for Shea and Toman was more desirable and more appropriate. So we met on Tuesday, we had a substantial conversation about a variety of immediate potential improvements, tier one, and I kept using that phrase during our Safe and Orderly Schools, a tier one addressing of overall procedures and actions and reactions. Next time, we're going to begin our conversation, and the next time is next Wednesday after school. And I'm going to speak to the timeline just a smidge in a moment. But we did speak to a major and minor offense and action flow chart. So we, everybody can be speaking the same language. So whatever happens in teacher room A is happening in teacher room B, and it's supported by administrator C. So all the way through, the language is consistent. So that's what I would refer to and what we collectively began to refer to as a tier one initiative. There are some fast things that we can do to increase supervision on the floor to address actions. I think that the team wanted a little bit more of a substantial action for students that don't come to school to learn. There is a cadre of students that come and fail to attend classes, and they're looking for something a little bit more substantial for those students who are not being students that are coming for a social experience. We do have our second meeting coming up on Wednesday, at which point we're going to address the things that we previously addressed. There is a very large appetite to investigate and create an ALP. Again, for our students, for those students who are not functioning, and that is something that this committee is going to address in more detail. The scheduling of these meetings, as you can imagine, is a little bit challenging as there are very few days in a week, and there's a lot of initiatives involving the same people. So we are going to meet on Wednesday after school. And I would like to bring up, and I spoke with the superintendent about the possibility of maybe doing this, along with my colleagues on the executive cabinet. And there was a conversation about maybe doing it during the school day abbreviated portion, so we can do a little bit of a faster turnaround for meetings because it's, it's needed, as we know, and it's necessary, as we're aware. And the time, the timing of these meetings just doesn't seem to go fast enough for us. However, people did feel generally optimistic upon leaving the meeting and they're eager to start developing the things that we put into place. We talked about potentially purchasing like an electronic pass system, which would not cure everything, but it would give the opportunity to put parameters around the pass system that students would have to put into the computer and ask for an electronic pass. And for example, if there are too many kids in the hall, we could put parameters on how many students are going to be in the hall. That pass would be denied, that student couldn't leave. I'm going to use Mrs. Carney as an example. If Mrs. Carney and I don't get along and we had a planned altercation or something and she asked for a pass out of my class, her class, and then I tried to put a pass out of my class, it would deny it because it was known in the background that Mrs. Carney and I don't get along, so it would prohibit us from going there. Same thing for any other pre-existing conditions. If then, at that point, when my pass was denied and I said, I'm leaving anyway, the teacher could put in an A wall kind of alert, and that would flash red on the people who are monitoring the system. So there are a couple of things that we're investigating, and I think that generally speaking, we made a good progress for our first resurrected meeting, and we're eager to continue.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
Want me to hold questions now or wait for discussion?
No, this is just a discussion.
So we talked about this last year.
Yes.
And last year, my comments might be similar as they were last year. I see, you know, there's, there's adult-centered problems and student-centered problems when it comes to climate and culture and building. And where does, where are we teasing out the student-centered problems and some of the adult-centered challenges? So the student-centered problems, of the students who have the most discipline infractions, who are skipping the most classes, who are, who are most absent, the social workers, psychologists, the guidance counselors, the, the building leadership. Are those students getting the most touch points with our specialists in the schools compared to students that are, are not facing as many challenges? And I'm tracking that. So, you know what I mean?
So that's part of.
We have so many people in our buildings already, it's like, are, is everybody doing what they're supposed to do with the kids that need it the most? Because if a kid needs reading instruction, that child will get more, more reading instruction and more support than a child who's already reading proficiently. And I would expect that the services are working that way. Can we have some way to track that?
So, Mrs. Carney, to address your, your question, I think I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I, I don't necessarily know that those procedures are in place for those touch points as frequently as you're intimating or as is needed for those higher, higher, higher risk children. I do think that our guidance counselors, our social workers, our behavior techs, our intervention, our administrative team, they're working, but I think that we need to shift from more reactive to proactive, and that starts with a little bit more of a planned base. Moving forward, Mrs. Robin and I are going to be in our schools starting on Monday. We're going to be, I'll be at Toman, Mrs. Robin's going to be at Shea, and we're going to be aiding in those particular, get eyes on the ground and support the administration to put those touch points and those opportunities in.
Another question. I know that I've asked before about students was, are we asking the students who are not attending class, why don't you go to class? Why don't you want to go to class? Very often, like I was a high school language teacher, middle school language teacher, an administrator in an alternative high school. You know, the kids, when they're saying they're not, maybe they don't feel engaged. Maybe they're perceiving that the lesson is not engaging or that there's no relationship with the teacher, whatever it is. But whatever that student is feeling like, I'm going to go to school today, but I'm not going to that class. Why am I, why is the student not going to that class? So I would really want us to have an opportunity for students to tell us the root cause of these problems. Instead of us coming together year after year and trying to come up with solutions that may not be the right fit.
So that was part of the, so our agenda on Tuesday was broken down into, what's the problem? What's our current, what's last year's issue? Where did we go? Let's recap. What's our current condition? And teachers who came to, came with that kind of information. The students aren't feeling as engaged as they should. Or they did mention the substitute, I go, I have seven classes in a day. My first three periods are subs. They actively disengage, right? And then they are more inclined to go into the hall. So they started that work, and I think that that's something that our committee is definitely going to, to go full throttle. Because there has got to be a root cause, there's got to be a root cause that we can address that doesn't necessarily mean whatever we're thinking it means, right? I don't think A always equals B. I think that there's something in between.
One other thing, my, my expectation is that teachers are in classrooms, administrators are in, I mean, they're outside of their classrooms during passing times, that administrators are out, are in the hallway modeling that behavior. If they're in a meeting and the bell rings during passing time, that that meeting ends, that's an adult-centered meeting, and it becomes about kids in the passing time. Teachers are outside the door saying hello to students when they come in. These things cost no money. Their relationships are research proven, one of the main reasons kids come to school and engage in school. And so making sure that, that we are not immediately saying, what are the students doing wrong? But as the adults in the building, we're asking, what can we do better? And how can we do that better? How can we serve them better? Because these aren't other people's kids, they're our kids.
Do you want?
I appreciate that.
Anything else? Ms. Grant?
So I, I just wanted to, are there, I know these meetings started last year and then they were stopped and then they're starting again. And it sounds like with them starting again, then there's going to be a next meeting, and then there will be a next meeting. But it sounds like from what has been brought to our attention is that there is kind of like an urgency for change or for something to take place. Did you guys discuss for anything to start immediately, to be put in place, to try to start out the process?
Right, so we're going to get eyes out there. I think that what actually Mrs. Carney is talking about is more, more eyes in the hallway, more conversation, more touch points with those students. And like I said, Mrs. Robin and I will be in the schools assisting those administrators because sometimes a fresh set of eyes, when you're not in the, in the weeds of things. But quite frankly, there are some students that might need to not necessarily be there or take a break for a moment because they, they disrupt so much because they're not there to be a student. And so we are definitely looking for some minor, major offenses and actions to those offenses. Like what's, what's a student, what's a teacher-based consequence versus what involves administrative intervention? And there are some, there's a good, there's a good number of students that have their overage and undercredited, right? So those are students that we have to look very hard at their educational program. And what, how did they become a junior with four credits? Like, why are they there? How did that happen? And what are we going to do about it? So those are the kinds of things that we started having a conversation in our, in our, in our first new meeting. And that's definitely something that we're going to, we had some momentum. Eager and enthusiastic about continuing that momentum, and some things are going to be challenging. Some things are going to be easier. But I do think that together, we're, we're collectively working with the, the teachers alliance, and we're collectively brainstorming those ideas, and, and really nothing's off the table. So it's a really long answer to your question, and which could be saying yes, but I wanted to elaborate a little bit more.
Anything else? Just a couple of, so I'm assuming we stopped meeting because we, we got the desired results from last year, right? So the behavior improved and we stopped? I, I'm trying to figure out why, if this has been an ongoing issue, why did we have this gap of time that, that the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee didn't need? And then the second part of that is, I've asked the clerk to put it on every agenda going forward for every meeting the rest of this year, so that we can get an update at the regular scheduled meetings, at the work session. Because part of, it, it, it failing to meet last year, I, I take some of the responsibility for that. And I think this committee shares in that responsibility because we weren't, we weren't asking for updates. So I'm asking for an update. Why, why did we stop meeting?
The Safe and Orderly Schools Committee met until we had a resolution. There were three takeaways from last year's Safe and Orderly Schools Committee. One takeaway and plan was to implement a, two positions, one at each school.
Did that happen?
We implemented the position, we advertised for the position, we did not hire for the position. And then it was taken off the budget at the end of, when they were redoing the budget for the school year. And then the other thing was a three to five program that came out, and we did investigate with Pearson. Pearson is our core, our academic partner. And Pearson does have a online program. And we investigated, they're Pearson, and do a three to five program, had the funding in place for that. And that, for some, I can't tell you, Chairman, why that didn't come off the ground, perhaps. Perhaps my colleague, Mrs. Rabbit, might be able to recall. And then part and parcel, I think there was some staffing shifts.
So, so we formed this school out of, this committee out of a safety concern that was brought to us last year.
Correct.
You met until you got three takeaways, and you stopped meeting, but you didn't implement any of the three takeaways?
The, sorry, the third one, my apologies, was an in-house for Shea High School, in-school suspension or alternative refocus run, and that did get into place.
You didn't put it now?
It is.
I could?
I'm going to find out and probably let you know on March 12th. I'm thinking that right now, I'm going to say, probably not as effective as it should be, or could be, or it's so, so many, right? Again, I had spent time earlier saying, we've been reactive rather than proactive, and I do think we need to flip that to be, that's a reactive approach, right? You do something wrong, you go into in-school, you get suspended, you get detention. That's reactive. But how do we get to that before it happens kind of thing? What services do we have? And I think it was brought up that we have only suspension, in-house, and detention. Then what? What else is there? We have parent meetings, we have these conversations. So I think that that's what's the major minor offenses and actions, because there's a lot more, like Mrs. Carney alluded to, there's a lot more that could be done, increase those touchpoints, increase those moments, have more parent meetings, be a little bit more aggressive and say, "We're here to learn," right? So there, it's a whole mindset, a whole shift. You don't do that here. We need to, we need to be a student. You know, I would always say, "Oh, I'm a student athlete." Well, you need to be a student before you're a student athlete, right? So you need to be a student in the school, and being a student in the school isn't hanging out in the halls or in the cafeteria. So those are like, kind of those things that need to happen.
And I think, to that point, being proactive would have been putting the resources in there. That was one of the takeaways. Being proactive would have been, you know, rolling out those initiatives and continuing to meet and resolve it. So, you know, whatever you need from this committee to rectify this, the escalation that we're seeing is, I'm sure that you have it from us, and you had it from us last year. I just, I, we've got to get this fixed, and urgency needs to be the mantra.
Agreed.
Thank you. Ms. Manolo?
So I know right now we're focusing on our high schools, but I also understand from talking with different teachers that it's a different mindset among students from elementary, middle school. And we're carrying that forward into high school, and that's where it's escalating, because they've become of age, they've gotten their voice. But it's starting in the elementary in the middle. And I think, in addition to focusing on Shea and Tolman, we also have to start looking at the elementary and middle school, so we can stop it before it gets to that point in the future. So do you have plans in your one meeting, from your one meeting, to?
It came up.
Bring it back?
It came up, to really, so do I have plans? No, I, we need to kind of fix the here and the now, and then really kind of look at students who are underperforming students from little elementary school, right? It did come up, not little elementary school, little, like, elementary, right? Sorry, not little, not all as little, small. But I do think that, how do you get an overaged, undercredited junior without having been a pervasive, "I haven't passed a single thing, but I've moved along"? So those are kind of things, or I've done it. Another thing that came up at the meeting is, "Oh, I'll just do it later. I'll do it at credit recovery. They're going to give me another opportunity to make that opportunity up or make that academic piece up." And, you know, C is good enough. So there's a lot of mind shifts that have to happen. So did it come up? It absolutely came up. Is it part of the conversation that we agree with? We do. Do I have an absolute plan? No. Will I have one on March 12th? Probably not. But as we continue to work on this committee, I do think that we'll get there.
Ms. Carney?
You did mention prior recovery. When I was at Central Office here, we did a lot of work in the high schools to implement a content recovery versus a credit recovery program, where it was an ongoing, content-based, in-the-moment recovery of that content, so that we did not need the numbers in credit recovery, that kids did not become so overwhelmed that they then did not come to school or had no chance of failure. Is that program, we can put it on another agenda, but I would like an update on the way content recovery was running as, when I, in 2018, when I was curriculum director here, and if that program is still running as it was set up? And if we, why it has not, or if there's any way we can, you know, it was a successful program for kids to catch up with credits before the summer? And so we could just revisit that?
Yeah, if we can put that on a future agenda, I would appreciate that, so I can get a little bit more information to speak to.
Anything else? All right, yeah, moving on to the discussion item portion of the meeting. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Ranger. Before you, some monthly vendor reports, budget transfers, current position open in the business office, the timeline and the length of postings for those position, and then the audience compliant timeline. And in fairness to Mr. Ochio, I did not ask him to join us this evening to go over these things. I wanted to get a, an idea and get in front of the committee some of the reports that we had gotten on a weekly and monthly basis prior. So those are back in your packet to review. And if you have any questions, you can email the clerk, and she will get you the answer and share that answer with the committee. Ms. Dubey?
I just have one, I don't know if this is something that the business department, but on the timeline for postings, am I correct in interpreting this, that they were posted, all three of them basically, were posted once sometime around September, October, and then not posted at all until, what, two, three days ago? Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify if that was, if I was missing, like, there were other things in between?
You see the openings for the senior accountant, the controller, the business financial analyst, posted in September and October of '23. That was a week posting, and then not posted again until 2/26, a couple of days ago. Ms. Manolo?
I have a question on work orders.
Oh, good, Chris is here. And like we've done in the past, the discussion items are open. It doesn't, you don't have to go in order, anyone you want to comment on, feel free.
How are you staff now?
We have a, our electrician, one of our licensed electricians is retiring, and one of our, our only licensed master plumber accepted another job for another school department. And one of our general maintenance men is out on a long term absence.
So we worked together on and off on some of the things, and we've gone through schools together and looked at things. So when we went through the schools together, there were a couple items that were on the list that have still yet to be repaired, and it's been over a year.
Okay.
And some of these things are safety issues.
Are these specific to the work order you?
Well, yeah, because he's got 178 total work orders open. So it's, you know, do you rank them by?
Yes, we put them in priority. Priority, like, the, there is a safety, one in there, a category for safety, and then we rank them for high priority and medium priority.
So why is it taking so long for safety issues to be handled?
Which safety issues are you referring to?
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
But?
Can you elaborate, Ms. Manolo, for the rest of the room?
Okay, for the rest of you. So in Goff, there is like a clay kind of flooring. And then half of the floor in classroom room 312 was replaced with tiles. So over the years, that clay, whatever it's made of, has been disappearing. And now it's left a hole in the floor. And I've asked to have it fixed. And I've been told time and time and time again that it was going to get fixed. I happened to stop in there at one time. The student told me he tripped out of it. And I again called maintenance, and I said, "It's a safety issue. Can we get it fixed?" It is still not fixed. I ran into the teacher, "It is still not fixed. It's getting bigger." So it poses a safety issue. So these are the things that we have out there that not everybody knows about, but they need to be taken care of. The student's safety and the safety of our teachers is important. And so these things need to be addressed. We need an avenue to be able to address them.
Agreed, Ms. Manolo. Chris, can you look at that specific issue?
Room 312?
Yeah.
Go up?
Yes. A couple of things. Is there a work order in for it? Because some, some of what happens is that when we go out, we say, "I want to get this fixed, and that fixed, and this fixed, and that fixed." It assumes that, because we're asking, it's going to get done, but there's a flow of how this, a process for which this works. Can you check if there's a work order?
Yes.
Get back to Diana with when it was put in. Does it address that specific issue in the floor? And if not, can you get down there tomorrow and take a look at it?
Most definitely.
Oh, I can tell you what I did do, is after we walked through, I made a list of everything that we noted. Chris got a copy, John got a copy, I believe now Lisa has a copy. And there are still a half a dozen items still on that list that haven't been fixed. So, and I haven't been back to inspect it, because they have the maintenance group, they have all the information. We worked on it together. It should be taken care of. So I did make sure everybody had the same information, so it would be taken care of. I didn't just, it wasn't just a verbal conversation. It was actual documentation.
I understand that, Ms. Manolo, but I would caution that that may be beyond our scope as individual members to create lists for the maintenance team to say, "Here's a bunch list that golf," and, because all seven of us could be doing that at every school, and seeing, you know, a new set of eyes, you see new issues. So, but your point is taken, the safety of our students and our staff. First, we'll get that information back to us through Diana Camara.
Yes, I will.
Ms. Manolo, you have something?
Well, I do, but I also want to piggyback on what Joanna's saying. That's exactly the policy from last couple of weeks ago. That's why it's so important that if you do go around the, if any of us go around the schools to make a list, I mean, if there's a hole inside one of our schools, the seven of us should have been aware of that, or made aware of that, so we can possibly put the pressure of the body of a hole, not just, like you said, only three people are aware of it. Assistant Superintendent, you were made aware of it today?
No, people.
Before today. All right, so I'm just saying, I think if all of us do, they have, Mr. Chairman, I'll talk again for you, but I guess that's my opinion. I think individuals shouldn't go out there saying, "What's more pressing?" Because you might be aware of it, but you think there's something at Shea, or you think there's something at another school. Well, there's a hole, and floors are made out of clay.
I would have to check the material. It's probably would have been an epoxy or something.
That would be interesting. Now, back to my, Mr. Chairman, what did you ask the CFO timeframe for the budget transfer report from?
I did not, I didn't ask for a specific timeframe. I asked to provide us with the budget transfer report and vendor charge-out report, an update on the audit timeline.
Was this produced by, is produced by a CFO or by a?
I can't say who produced the document, but the vendor payments go from February 1st through the 23rd.
Hey, I'm looking at the budget transfer, and I'm just, I'm surprised. At, one day, the 16th, we have all the pest control transfer payments. But nothing else in the district had to be transferred?
Yeah.
My first year as chair, there was numerous times that people came to us asking us for transfer. I'm just curious, are we, is this part of this, when you opened up last week of the regular meeting, of are we $2.2 million short?
Well, again, I don't know. The budget transfer report covers just the month of February, but to your point, you would expect more than just pest control, $17,000 worth of pest control transfers in and out. I would ask this list to take that as a takeaway, to find out from the business office if we can get an updated, get a date budget transfer report, or if this is all they have.
Oh, we?
Please, and thank you.
What do we want from the time the list left till now? Because there are budget transfers that the school committee is supposed to approve. So we would want to know.
Yeah, fiscal year, fiscal year to date would get us from July 1st through. Anything else on the discussion items? There being none?
I have a question.
No, I'm waiting for you to make a motion adjourned.
Oh, oh, I thought you were going to go over the, the other stuff. I'm sorry.
Well, any other questions on the discussion items?
What can I? Second.
Motion adjourned by Ms. Dubey, seconded by Ms. Brandi. Discussion follows in favor, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good night.